All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, like sign. Motion carries, that passes. The approval of the consent agenda this month is the April minutes from the planning commission and HPC, May called session minutes, city council session, executive session, called session, and the executive session on May 28th. I need a motion for the approval of the consent agenda, please.
May do approve.
Thank you, Mr. Gregory, is there a second? Thank you, Ms. Samz, is there any discussion? All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, like sign. Motion carries. Okay, that passes, thank you. Ladies, would you all please come forward for me? We'll send you right here behind this podium. Okay, I love the fact that you all are here, congratulations. This team is our six and under team that plays for the Walton County Rec Department. They played 15 games this year, did not lose one. Anybody have a championship ring that you can show? But, but the other reason I wanted to come in tonight, Marcus and Blair Kilgore are our coaches, parents, did you have two teams or three teams between you this time?
Two.
Three last season, right? Okay. What it takes in our community to build, just frankly, to build community, whether it's in soccer, or basketball, or baseball, or whatever, are parents who have the heart to spend time not only with their kids, but with others. My, my own father wouldn't coach me, but he always coached against me. I don't want to hear about his coaching techniques at the dinner table, I promise. You also have the soccer skills camp that you do weekly during the summer, we've had, what, 60, 70 kids there, right?
Oh, my.
100 kids last week, and this is all, this is all parents and volunteers. We also have two club teams that are all really getting traction as well, so I just appreciate your coming in, appreciate your investing your time in these kids, and congratulations. And, this is for you.
Way to go, girls. Thank you.
Way to go ladies, appreciate it, thank you for coming. And you're also the cutest team I've ever seen. Hey, Marcus. Alright, moving next to the star readers, are Kayden Cohen here? Did I pronounce the names correctly? Okay, boys, could you come up, please? As you know, oh, y'all are just so impressive, I'm so glad you're here. We have had a really, really strong literacy push, that, that we've worked with our impact team, we've worked with Monroe Elementary, the library, we have the partnership for families and children, and we have never had one child read 1,000 books before kindergarten in our, in our district. And we had one two weeks ago, and then we got the second one last week. So, this is a proclamation honoring Cohen, I'm gonna read them together, Cohen Eason and Kate Eason, for extraordinary achievement in early literacy. Whereas the ability to read is one of the most vital skills for lifelong learning, critical thinking, and personal growth, and whereas fostering a love for books at an early age builds the foundation for academic success, creativity, and imagination, and whereas the 1,000 Books Before Kindergarten Initiative encourages families to read together and prepare young children for a strong start in school, and whereas Cohen Eason and Kate Eason, through dedication, curiosity, and extraordinary love of stories, has achieved a remarkable milestone of reading 1,000 books before entering kindergarten, and whereas Cohen and Kate are the second and third children in the region to accomplish this outstanding feat, setting an inspiring example for other children and families to follow, now therefore be it resolved that we recognize and celebrate Cohen and Kate Eason for their exceptional accomplishments, your commitment to literacy, and bright promise as lifelong learners. May your achievements encourage others to embrace the joy and power of reading, and witness whereof this proclamation is issued with great pride and admiration on this day, the 10th of June 2025. John S. Howard. One, and... Two. Thank you all so much, that is really, really impressive. I'm so proud of you, how awesome, congratulations. Are you okay with me? The baby whisperer, right? So proud of you, that was excellent. You wanna send them, send them home, you can hang with us?
Don't think so.
Come back and visit soon, okay?
Thank you.
Thank you all, I appreciate your being here. Then I have Monroe State, Monroe State's volunteer recognition. Do I have anybody here from Monroe States? From the, the team, the team, Adrian?
Yes.
Okay. Thank you, let me get to your, no, you come on up. I just, I just have something for you. Thank you, I'm great, thank you. We're talking about always building community, whether it's with a sports team, whether it's with literacy rates, or whether it's just maintaining an area that has kind of been neglected. The area around Monroe States had a developer that went bankrupt in the early 2000s, and you all have been living and working on streets and common areas that were never deeded to the city, so they weren't taken care of. So Ms. Brown got together with a group of you and a bunch of the residents and started taking care of it every day. I've seen before and after pictures, they, you're just doing an amazing job, and, and I appreciate it. Did you not bring anybody else? Come on! Y'all, y'all come on up. But Ms. Brown has something for you. Thank you, I appreciate your being here. Ms. Brown has something for you. Thank you, appreciate you coming in. And we've got, you coming? No? You're just gonna make them do all the work, alright. Yes ma'am.
I have some friends out in social circle, Dave and Penny.
Yes ma'am.
And they said, I told them I was gonna meet with you, they said to be sure you tell him that we don't like him one bit. And she, and she asked me again when I saw her the next week, "Did you tell him?", and I said, "I haven't seen him yet, it's the next week", but she said, "You tell John Howard that we don't like him one bit." So, that's the message from Penny and John. And my name is Brenda Fears, I live 926.
Yes ma'am.
Old Mill Point.
Yes ma'am.
In Monroe Estates. My husband and I bought the house five years ago, and we've made it quite lovely. It looks like better homes and gardens inside, it's just gorgeous, you know, white plush furniture, because we're seniors and retired, beautiful designer blue walls, and it's, that's lovely, but then you step outside, and it's like a ghetto. And it's overkept, and my husband, along with Mr. Johnson there, they got together, got a riding lawnmower, other lawnmowers, they didn't just do our little square, they went all the way down, there's eight units attached, front and back, and they ride the whole neighborhood, and they've encouraged other residents to do likewise, to help it look better. And my church, the gathering, Brian Brock is the pastor, the men's group there got together one of the Saturdays with the prayer, and they said, because we work for the community, they do a carver in the bridge schools, we do different things, and they said, "Well, let's do something over at Monroe Estates", and they got one of those zero turns, or whatever you call, because you couldn't see, when you were leaving the subdivision, if something was coming down the hill, the overgrowth was so high, you couldn't see what was coming, you had to creep. I'm from up north, it reminded me of snowdrifts, snowbanks, because when you come out of your driveway, the snowbanks were so high, up in Syracuse, New York, you couldn't see a car, you had to inch and peek. That's how it was in Georgia, but it was just overgrown grass and limbs, and when we reached out, and we asked, could something be done, I mean, there was potholes that tear up my car, you had to go around it, and then finally found someone who had some concrete, two years later, that could level it out a little bit, but I mean, we pay taxes, my taxes went up like $3,000 when those investors came, and paid twice as much as I paid for my house, or what, what they were worth, and they made the taxes rise, and we complained, and we showed pictures, I paid for an assessment, didn't matter, because he came and he bought multiple units at extraordinary cost, it made our taxes rise. And for us to be told that it doesn't matter that we're paying taxes and nothing can be done that is privately owned, but the owners have abandoned the place, they're boarded up, there's no one there, so you can't say it's owned, we own our area, but we don't own the sidewalks, and all of the areas, and some of it is, is abhorrent actually, and we try our best, my husband, they bought swings to put in the area, and basketball hoops, and the kids like it. And we try to deter crime in the area, but we really need help, we really need help. I see other parts of Monroe where lots of things are being done, and it just seems like we're forgotten, but we pay taxes too, and we would appreciate a little assistance in maintaining the common areas.
Well, I understand, I understand what you're saying. Fact is legally, we can't touch those common areas, they're, they're not ours.
But they're not ours either.
Well, well, I understand, but the good part about it, and the reason we have you here is because you've taken pride in it. Legally, people can volunteer to do it, legally, we cannot do it as a city, that's, that's somebody else owns the property.
That's just it, I need to know who owns it, I wanna write them a letter, I wanna give them a call. All those vacant landlords and the slump tenants that they have, and they're just there, taking up space and making the place, I would like to contact them, and also, isn't there a way for you guys to contact the owners? I don't know if they're out of state, out of the country, out of the area, or down the street, but all of the owners who don't keep their property up, and the windows are broken, and they just leave it like that, and they should be fined, all the trash that's outside, if they're fined for all the different things, we could use the money from those fines to ameliorate the situation, I would think.
We do, bless you, we do have a code department, and we will send our code guys over there.
Okay.
But when it comes to, when it comes to maintaining common areas, that's gonna be, there's a long list of things that are gonna have to be done before we would ever be able to do that. But, we'll talk, we'll talk further, and I'll get our code guys over there.
Okay, well, we appreciate, maybe we put up lights, because the lights went out, the street is dark, so we put up the ones around our property, and now it's like a beacon as you turn that corner, but other than that, it's bad, but thank you.
Tell David and Penny, I've had enough of them.
I will.
Thank you. Moving to public comments, do we have anybody sign up, Chris? Oh, this one, that's right here. Joy Wilson, Joy! Jane, you wanna grab that camera? That's, that's fine, if you wanna stand over in front of Tyler. If you wanna stand right here in front of Mr. Gregory. Alright, Joy, you have five minutes.
Yes, you're on camera, thank you. Good evening, my name is Joy Wilson, and I'm very grateful to be back in the building. I'm trying to calm down from an emotional threat and handle my business. This is actually a official request for grant funding toward long-term stability for home and work. Goal initiative, personal safety in order to protect health. Spiritually, mentally, physically, and financially. Thesis, this piece is called "Music is Medicine and Money". What on earth am I here for? Founder of Degrip Industries Entertainment, breaking the spell of ignorance within communities primarily and deliberately through literature, volunteer charity work, and entertainment. As a professional inspirational songwriter. Introduction, what is power? The ability, as in to perform a task, or to make a decision. To do something, or act in a particular way, especially as a quality, specifically and deliberately. The standard of something, as measured in comparison or against other things of a similar kind, or the degree of excellence of something. A distinctive attribute or characteristic intentionally. The capacity or amount that something can contain or produce, to direct or influence the behavior of self, and/or the course of events, moving with great speed or force, which is assertiveness of a person. This includes cognitive abilities such as problem solving, and critical thinking, as well as emotional abilities such as empathy and self-awareness, like giving from oneself, being equipped to do so. Specifically and deliberately, effective strategy that is beneficial even outside of one's own self-aim to be equipped. Power. I'm trying to get on my feet financially as an inspirational songwriter, and I'm needing a breakthrough from somebody that's basically not a pig and is a good Samaritan, instead of politicking me through several different guys, and I thought communication is very essential, and so I'm gonna get more specific about why I'm here, because I don't waste breath, I'm trying to get on my feet financially, and someone's playing me for stupid, and I don't have time. The project is called "We Need Something to Stand For", you can find the music video on YouTube by Joy Wilson, and the theme is positive and productive change. Thank you for listening.
Thank you, Joy, I appreciate you coming in. Something to stand for?
We need something to stand for, and the theme is positive and productive change. Thank you for listening.
Yes ma'am, thank you for coming in.
Get one, W-O-N. Let's Make Banking Easier by Wells Fargo. Thank y'all.
Thank you, Joy. And I'm sorry, I can't pronounce this name. Alagambare? Zone change? Come on, come forward. Yes sir. Sifola? Got it, thank you for coming in. Could you knock the microphone down so we can, so it'll be able to get you on, on camera?
Better?
Yes sir.
Yes sir, I've been there 35 years, working very hard to fix that place up, and everybody in town knows that, I have done a lot of work in that place there. Was hardly making money there, and slowly I built the place up, I just have rented it out to a gentleman that he was supposed to, you know, that started business, and he goes and tried to get the business license, and they tell him that they have changed the zoning on the property, without somebody telling me that they have changed a little zone, or anything like that, and I found out, I was not informed of that change and all of that, so I have leased the property to him, and he come to try to get a license, they would not give him license. I would like to see what, what can I do, you know, can they reverse that decision? It was a B2, and they have changed it to a different kind of zoning that does not allow other repair shop, and I have been there 35 years doing it, every myself, several times also rented out, so.
Okay, Logan normally I'll leave Brad.
Man, I can just give you this in a nutshell, when we adopted form-based code at the beginning of the year, we had a full year of public notices and so on and so forth, leading up to the form-based code. In that time, the existing auto repair shop had closed up there on North Broad, and so what happened is, we created a new zoning classification called CD4, which kind of overlaid over these existing properties in the form-based code zone, and so, one of those conditions under that zoning of CD4 is auto repair shops, auto sales, brokers, things like that are not allowed in there anymore. Had the business not, the previous business not closed, it would have been an existing non-conforming issue, but as it stands now, that business had, the previous business there had closed, then we went on to form-based code adoption, and now that is a prohibited land use in the CD4, so, that's in a nutshell.
Okay. Does anyone have any comments, or, you understand?
Yes, but what happened, the business closed because the person that was, I had rented the place to, he had been, started doing shady works, and was taking money from people, and I had to force him out because he had this bad check, fell on the check, you know, closing the account, writing me a check.
Right.
He owes me over $12,000, and I have a 5fer on him, and it took, it took us a long time to put him out of there, and after that, you know, I, I put it for rent again, and another person took over, so, that, that was the reason. Actually, I've had three, three tenants that they actually did, you know, submit, and decided to, you know, force them out. I have like over $45,000 5fer, and that's about it, you know.
Well, as, as it was, it was, it was a closed business, and, and that's when the zoning changes, so the zoning didn't change while the business was, was in effect, and that's, that's the reason you're going through, what you're going through, it's no longer an acceptable use.
What can I do now, because I need to, I need to, you know?
There, there are several acceptable uses for that property, that, that I can't go with you right now, but more than happy to discuss that in the next couple of days, and I can put you in touch with our, with our team of development, they'll go over that with you.
Yeah, I'd like to know what to do, really, because I have, I have a really good client right now.
Right.
Yeah, signed up with me, and they actually gave him a utility and everything, it's all hooked up.
Right.
Didn't question him, and all of a sudden, you know, this thing happens, so.
Right, I understand that, and I apologize for, for the inconvenience, because I know it's not an, an easy, an easy issue to tackle, but if you'll go over that in the next couple of days, just reach back out to City Hall, and we'll put you in touch with the right person.
Yeah, we'll, we'll get a meeting set up with you, so that we can kind of go through some of the appropriate uses of the property and next steps.
And I have, and I have your phone number right here.
Yeah, if you'd like, I'd like to talk to you and see what I can do.
That'd be great, thank you for coming in. Yes sir. Franklin Johnson. We just talked about this. Now, go ahead.
Listen, Ms. Brenda touched on some stuff earlier. Here recently, we have had so many wannabe contractors, they're not contractors, out there doing work, they're putting the stuff outside, toilets, couches, all kinds of stuff, just sitting it outside, and it's sitting there for months, not just a day or two, it's sitting there for months. Is, we're trying to, myself and a few others in the, in the neighborhood are trying to, you know, make it livable around there, make it a place where somebody would want to live. So we got these contractors out there, just, just doing this stuff, and I called the code enforcement, myself personally, and the code enforcement told me that they had no way of contacting the owner of this said property, so what do we do when they can't, I mean, I thought you guys know everybody out there that, that own, so if they, if they don't know, and we can't find out, what do we do about that?
So, this is the most complicated property in the city of Monroe, probably on Walton County. This is a longer conversation than right here in the council meeting, so I know the mayor and I would be happy to meet with you and some of the residents that, that do have concerns and want to make it better, but it's not an easy answer, there are not a lot of easy answers.
So, Mr. Probst, if we could, that's part of my super district, it's part of Ms. Brown's little district. What he's telling you, that mess out there never should have been approved in the first place, but it was done a long, long time ago. Contractor that did it originally went bankrupt, fled, it's a mess, and what we've had, as you've said, is since then, a bunch of speculators come in, buy up various pieces of it, say they were gonna fix it, transform it, that's never happened. What the mayor was saying- What the mayor was saying earlier about those common areas, essentially, they belong to nobody at this point. And the legal way to fix that, it's a nightmare.
We.
But, but I agree with you. Something needs to be done. I didn't realize we had people going over there now and just sticking stuff out.
It's a lot of stuff.
I'm aware of a lot of the other problems, but I didn't know about that.
We, we don't have any problem about maintaining the common areas, because we know we don't have an association.
Well, let's do this. I want to be in that meeting, when you meet with these folks. I'm sure Ms. Brown does too, because those are our constituents, so.
So.
It needs to be fixed.
It, it does. Thank you.
Let me give you the best way to get me. Give me a shout tomorrow, and we'll set up a meeting.
Okay.
All right?
Sounds great.
Yes, sir. Thank you. Appreciate you coming in. I need the videographer, Ms. Sinclair.
Um, I want to address you. I want to start out by saying that I appreciate y'all, everything that you do. I'm grateful you put your lives on the line for us every day. But, that being said, on Highway seventy-eight between, where you get on to seventy-eight at West Spring, going east, there's one speed limit sign of fifty-five on seventy-eight. You don't see another one until you get to Walton EMC. And according to Georgia DOT, which I feel like since we're benefiting from stopping all the people, that we have some responsibility in getting Georgia DOT to put up speed limit signs. I see people stopped between West Spring and Walton EMC multiple times a day, not only city, but the state patrol, the county, and it's like it's a speed trap. And we've got people coming in from, you know, for University of Georgia games, people that don't know that seventy-eight is a fifty-five mile per hour zone. And I feel like, well, there's supposed to be a, a speed limit sign at every junction of a state road going into seventy-eight. So, that would mean Highway one thirty-eight, Highway eleven, Spring Street, east, east side of Spring Street, and eighty-three. So, there should be that many speed limit signs going down through there. And I haven't been stopped myself, but I see it every day, because I travel that section every day. And it's just annoying, because you know that the police know that there are no speed limit signs, and that's just not fair. I want people to come through Monroe to stop and love our city. I don't want them coming through thinking they're going to get into a speed trap. So, I'm hoping that y'all can get in touch with Georgia DOT to put up signs.
Thank you. And that is not RV, actually.
I'm sorry?
I said, that would not be RV. But Jeremiah, could you please look into that?
Okay. Great.
Thank you, Jane. I appreciate you coming in. Moving, thank you, to business items. Logan Probst, City Administrator Report.
Um, I'll be very brief and just say that we're kind of hitting on all cylinders. Just, you see the reports, the packets tonight. We've got just a plethora of projects that we're trying to put to bed from our 2020 bond, bond projects. Economic development has really heated up, whether it be certain industries looking, or we'll have some announcements in downtown soon, hopefully. Leave that to them to decide, but things are not slowing down in Monroe, contrary to what you see elsewhere in the country, in other economic conditions in other states. But we're full tilt ahead, and we have a lot of work ahead of us in all departments. I'm really proud of all of our departments for maintaining the service levels that they have been over the past year, with the current staffing that we have, and then throw in all these storms and everything else that we have on, on top of us. It seems like every month or so, they're all doing a phenomenal job. So, really, I just want to use my report to brag on everybody for just getting the job done on all these projects, the day-to-day services, and then the special occasions. So, thank you all.
Thank you, Mr. Probst. Mr. Bailey?
And I'm going to piggyback on that just a little bit, based on recent storm that came through Saturday evening. I know that I was here for quite a while too, but all the way till Sunday morning, Sunday afternoon, I don't think, I didn't see a person from, or every single department that we have here represented, cleaning up the streets, getting power back situated in the middle of a chaotic situation. It was like I told someone, I come through downtown, when I first come into town, about seven-thirty, eight o'clock that evening, when I got here, there wasn't a leaf on the street in downtown. I mean, it didn't look like anything happened, and then you hit pockets of the city. Springdale, South Madison, Reed Street, Armistead Circle, obviously Highway seventy-eight, one thirty-eight was just a disaster. Holly Hill in there too, several other places. But Electric Telecom, I mean, they, they were busy, and every line truck, every bucket truck, we had hooking things back up. We had contractors, we had the city of Griffin, Covington, if I'm not mistaken, Rodney here helping us out, and then Water, Sewer, Gas. I saw every one of those departments had crews in, helping clean streets. Pretty much, our entire streets department was in central services as well, just helping, you know, all hands on deck. So, kudos to what those guys do while leaving their homes that I'm sure were also damaged with trees down in certain areas. So, it's just a testament to what we are as a city and how well we come together as a team. So, thank you to everybody that was out there that night and everything that everybody does. And then the only other couple of things I wanted to hit are associated with Main Street downtown. Our concert this past Friday night, Happier Times, right? We had right at five thousand people at the Town Green for Fly Betty and the performance that we had there. And then there were just over ten thousand people in town that afternoon and that evening total. Great Myrtle Festival is coming up this Saturday. Right now, it looks like we've got about a sixty, seventy percent chance of storms. As long as it's a little rain, little wind, we might still go on as planned, hopefully no lightning. The hours are nine to two. I was going to ask for volunteers. We do have a dunking booth, so if anybody would like to sit in there for an hour or so, I might do it myself. So, we'll have a little bit of fun. And then today, our various, I guess, various accomplishments over the last year have been nominated for state awards. Our Monument Park is nominated with the Georgia Downtown Association this year. The Welcome Center also, which is rehabbed to a historic building, which was originally built, I believe, through FDR's New Deal, way back in nineteen thirty-nine in the thirties, and we've refurbished that and kind of brought it back to what it originally looked like outside and then inside with the museum. We'll be moving our Main Street offices down there, starting next week, and then the eighteen twenty-one shop, and then our sculptures were nominated for a promotional implementation by the city this year as well. Our downtown is nominated for Downtown of the Year, and then I will submit the nomination tomorrow for our entire staff for an Inspirational Leader Award for the Georgia Downtown Association, simply because it doesn't happen without our entire staff that participate in events and keeping our downtown and our city as a whole looking like it does. So, it's no one person, it's everyone. So, and I'll be glad to take any questions.
Chris, we hosted Swanee two, three months ago. How many people do they have on their downtown staff?
Their Main Street department, I think, has somewhere between about seven and ten employees, I think, full-time, Logan?
Yeah, just their downtown.
Yeah, just their Main Street.
And we have how many?
We have one.
All right. Just wanted people to know.
And then.
I knew the answer.
And that's where we, I mean, we peel off from everybody. It's, it's a team effort. Sometimes there's a little more pride in that aspect of what we do with what we have, as opposed to I see what others don't do with what they have. So, it's a little bit of pride.
Well.
Granted, we'll take more people.
I certainly appreciate how much, how much it means to you, and it's clearly, clear to see. Are there any questions for Mr. Bailey? Here, none will move to department reports. Mr. Crowe, Central Services?
Thank you, Mayor. I really just have two quick, really kind of happy things. Over Memorial Day weekend, if you didn't see it, we had Ms. Kim Noor come to our airport. She is eighty-six years old, and she did her eight hundred, uh, seven hundred and eighty-fourth skydive jump with Monroe Skydive. Channel Five came out, did a little article on it, so you can actually go online, read it, watch their, their report. But, yeah, it was quite amazing. She started back in nineteen fifty-nine skydiving. She earned a golden medal in nineteen sixty-two at World Championships, and she was inducted into the International Skydiving Hall of Fame in twenty thirteen. So, she is traveling around the United States, trying to make it to a thousand. So, we were lucky enough to have her here and let her jump. She had a safe jump, landed good, and everybody was happy, so.
Yes, it's always happy to not die.
That's right. So, yeah. Go, go watch the video on, look it up on Channel Five. Outside of that, the only other thing I want to add this afternoon is the splash pad is back open. I'm sure most of you've been by there. It is packed. Everybody's happy. It's, it's a nice theme with the weather getting warmer, but it's open seven days a week from ten AM to six PM.
Thank you, Mr. Crowe. Are there any questions, Chris? Move into, I'm going to give this one to you, code report.
Yeah, thank you, Mayor. Just tonight, we have a couple of things, well, really just one thing, for your approval. And then we've just recently finished up a preliminary plat approval for the Tokyo business, which is a commercial subdivision, relocked commercial subdivision over there.
Okay.
That's the main items, and then we have a few of the alcohol licenses before evening night as well.
Got it. Any additional questions for Logan? Thank you, Mr. Probst. Mr. Wilson? Good evening, ma'am.
So, this is the one I think everybody's kind of waiting on with regard to the hotel RFQs. So, that officially did close May fifteenth. I think we were two days before that, the last time we met, maybe three. But at any rate, the final update on that, we had still two intent to submit. That was what we, we were expecting. We did unfortunately, we waited the last minute there, and we did unfortunately not get more than the one that we had already had, that I think everybody already knew about. The good news on that one, though, it is somebody that, and I don't know, we won't go too far into details, and there's still a lot to be determined on how we're going to proceed with that. But the one we did receive was from the developer who is responsible for, I think, the one we looked at, that's a good model that, that I think we all liked, was the Thomasville Downtown Hotel, so the courtyard there. So, I think aesthetically, that's, that's very similar to kind of what we, we would like to see. So, we've, we've got a good one. We just have a lot of details now to work through, and Logan and I and some others will be meeting later to figure out how to best proceed with that and get it, get it, get the ball rolling. So, don't know what that timeframe looks like at this point, as far as getting this done. I think the original feasibility study, we were looking at like two years, maybe three, from the point of where we're at right now. So, hopefully, a little earlier than that. City and downtown business activities. So, we had eight business license additions in all, and then three that were in the DDA, and then we had fi, I'm sorry, eight also deletions, and one of those was in the DDA. But I did want to mention that the caveat to that is that three of those were changes of ownership, so not necessarily deletions and additions. They're still there. So, it's actually five additions for, for an accurate number, five additions in, in all, and then two additions in the DDA, and then five deletions and zero in the DDA for, for that side of things. So, that's all I have. Anybody has any questions?
Any questions for Mr. Wilson? Thank you, Brian. Chief Dykes, fire.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. You have our incident data from April in front of you, and I will take a few moments to go over a few recent events. First of all, I do want to brag and say thank you to all our other city crews, but also to RB Shift, which is, was working Saturday, and they are back on again today, and as the joke, this is deja vu all over again, right before council tonight, is the storm rolled in and the first tree down versus, versus power line call came out. Thankfully, that was it. But Saturday evening, our first incident came in that was storm-related at six thirteen, and by midnight, we had been dispatched to twenty-two incidents. Obviously, that is much more than we are equipped to handle. We did do a department recall. We were able to put up an additional fire engine. Social Circle was spared. They were able to send us a fire engine to assist with our calls, so all of our relationships really paid off, and we are very appreciative of that. Do want to hit on one thing. I've been asked a couple of times about the nature of the storm. It was straight-line winds. Our weather station on top of the fire station clocked a peak wind of sixty-seven miles an hour during that storm. And I met with EMA today, who had been in touch with the National Weather Service, and they actually have Doppler and velocity radar pictures, and it showed a very strong cluster of straight-line winds above our sixty-seven miles per hour in that Highway seventy-eight, Highway one thirty-eight corridor, which we're very much aware of, because that's where the transmission lines and everything else were down. So, very strong straight-line winds. It's a good opportunity just to remind everybody that it doesn't have to be a tornado for it to cause a lot of damage, and to take severe thunderstorm warnings just as serious, and to stay away from windows, come in and so forth. Thankfully, don't, I don't think that we had any injuries to the public during this. I did, talking with Carl with EMA today, he said that this by far was the most significant in terms of the number of damaged structures from a summer thunderstorm event in terms of trees on houses. The other thing I was going to touch on is that tomorrow will be our third offering of a NIOSH Line of Duty class that's, that we're hosting at the municipal court, so we're thankful to have that. And we will have provided that class to over a hundred firefighters from a bunch of local departments. But Chief Rodney Wiggins from Green County is presenting this class, and it is about the, the death, line of duty death of Battalion Chief Chris Eddy that occurred back in September on a tractor-trailer fire that involved a refrigerated reefer that had frozen chickens that exploded. And these are the same types of trailers that we have lining up and down the cold food storage at Walmart Distribution. And thankfully, these are not regularly occurring events. However, there's not a lot of information known on this, so this has been a very eye-opening and beneficial class. So, if you go by PD in the court and see a bunch of fire trucks from a bunch of different jurisdictions, that's what's going on. And if you want to learn about something that you probably have no knowledge of, feel free to come in. We'll be there at nine o'clock tomorrow. I'd be more than happy to have you, and I'll answer any questions.
Are there any questions for Chief Dykes? Chief Watts, I'm going to come back to you, because I decided to skip over Beth on the last one. Ms. Thompson? Finance.
I'm just over here wondering if I'm just like invisible or what.
I know we have some all kinds of reports.
I know I went here last month, but you have before you the finance report as of April. If you have any questions, I'll be glad to answer those. A couple of months ago, you'll remember that the city was awarded a million-dollar redevelopment fund grant under the Community Development Block Grant Program through DCA. This will be used to eliminate blight conditions to the historic Old Ford Building in downtown Monroe, and we have a post-award public hearing on this award later on in the agenda tonight. Our external auditing firm, Malden and Jenkins, has completed the 2024 annual audit, and we are very proud of the fact that we had no findings in our audit this year. A representative with Malden and Jenkins is here tonight to represent the final report to you later in the meeting on this agenda tonight. Jeremiah and I had a federal compliance audit with GDOT today for our North Broad, North Broad Tap project. Glad to say that all went well with that, and our next step on that project will be a pre-construction meeting, which will be later this year. And finally, I want to introduce, you all know, a couple of months ago, we finally, after a long year and a half, hired an assistant finance director. If Ms. Rose will stand up. This is Rose Kiselita. She comes to us with a lot of knowledge and a lot of experience from Athens-Clark County, Barrow County. She's been finance director. She's also a CPA. So, if you see Ms. Rose around, please welcome her, and we're glad to have her on board.
Glad you're here, Rose.
And that's all I have, Mayor.
And she is nose to the grindstone, Rose. I know you, you work your fingers with the bone, and I appreciate it.
Yeah, more than I do.
All right. Chief Watts, you ready?
I guess so. Thank you, Mayor. Just some highlights of what we did back in April. One of the first things I want to highlight
Um, one of the first things I want to highlight is we have a great partnership with Piedmont Walton Hospital, and, uh, they do this, uh, awards for heroes awards for, uh, individuals throughout the community. And so they recognize two of our officers, uh, one being Corporal Kane, where she, um, found an unresponsive female in Monroe Church of Christ one afternoon, and she was able to, uh, extract the individual out of the car, uh, apply AED, and administer that until other medical help could get there, and, and the lady was able to survive that. And then the second one was for the actions of Officer Ariaza, and I've told this story once before in here where, uh, Social Circle had a kidnapping, and they were able to track the vehicle through Flock, was able to make an arrest on that and recover the child and return it back to home. So, uh, kudos for Piedmont Walton for recognizing those two officers. Um, another thing I wanted to talk about was, uh, you know Mike Newsome and how Evan Newsome, and they, they shoot skeet. So I used to be on the Boys and Girls Club, and then after I came off, Captain Tracy Henson, uh, fills that role on that, uh, board as well. And so we actually sponsored Mike Newsome's team to represent us, the city, the City Monroe Police Department, and they shot the Clay's for Kids at Boys and Girls Club, and they actually took the first place in that. So they raised a lot of money for the Boys and Girls Club here in Walton County. Um, also, back in April, we had the, uh, sobriety checkpoint with the Governor's Office Highway Safety. You probably see this from time to time. We had Georgia State Patrol, Walton County Sheriff's Office, Snellville Police, Morgan County Sheriff's Office, Millidgeville Police Department, Conyers Police Department, Department Corrections, and Newton County Sheriff's Office. They will come in, we usually feed them at the police department, uh, we'll teach a class, and then they'll go out at various checkpoints in the city, uh, and conduct these, uh, license checks. They had forty-eight contacts that night. They were able to make four DUI arrests and one drug arrest, so it was an effective night for sure. Um, one other case that an officer's made in the city was, uh, one officer made a traffic stop and, uh, recovered forty-eight pounds of marijuana off one traffic stop in itself. Uh, our total calls for service for the month of April was two thousand three hundred and four. Traffic stops was three hundred and sixteen. With issue of three hundred and ninety-four warnings, we only wrote sixty-five citations on that, so that's a positive. Uh, traffic crashes, we worked a total of fifty-six traffic, uh, crashes with only one fatality. Um, our officers recovered a total of eight handguns and one long gun, and year-to-date total, we've, we've recovered forty-six guns off the streets within the city. Uh, we had a total of fifty-seven adult arrests, one juvenile arrest, and, uh, I think that just about does it. If you should have any questions, I'd be happy to answer them.
Looks like you had a busy month. Are there any questions, Chief Watts? Thank you, RV. Um, moving to Mr. Smith, solid ways.
Thank you, Mayor. Uh, I'll be brief. Uh, we had an increase in mattress collection for the month of April. Uh, we picked up a hundred and sixty-six off the curb. Uh, we were able to bill out a little over half of them, eighty-nine, but, uh, we still can't identify all of them. We're not getting a hundred percent yet. Taxes, tons report, just to show our, um, trend from month to month on our tons report from the transfer station and what we collect, uh, at curbside. Uh, next week is June tenth holiday. Uh, every, everyone be on schedule, Monday, Tuesday, Wednesday are on schedule. Thursday, we're gonna push it back to Friday, so on the twentieth. Uh, so Thursday customers will be picked up on, uh, June twentieth. And, uh, just want to mention that our, uh, one of our capital, uh, equipment, uh, came in, it was delivered this week, and it's online, a real load of garbage truck. Got here a little sooner than we thought, but, um, yeah, it came on the budget. The budget was, uh, two hundred and forty-three thousand dollars. Uh, it came in at two hundred and forty-two, and, uh, it's going to replace the, um, recycling truck. Uh, we'll be making trips to West Rock, uh, to deliver our recycling. We have a vehicle that's reliable.
That helps.
Uh, and the last thing, um, of course, is obviously the limb pickup is gonna be, uh, a bit of a challenge, but we're gonna be running all three boom trucks, and we just ask the citizens just be patient. Um, when they call in, we're gonna get everybody. We're not charging. Uh, we're gonna clean it up, and it's probably gonna take a good two weeks before we get everybody taken care of. I'm good. Any questions?
Are there any questions for, for Mr. Smith? Thank you, Danny. Yeah, you've, uh, you're gonna be busy. I, I appreciate you. Uh, Jeremiah, Transportation?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'll start by saying that if we could get about two more of those straight-line storms, don't think we'd have right-of-way issues. I think everything within the right-of-way would be handled, and it might take us a little bit longer to get it up, but then the next one could come, and I think we'd be, we'd be all right as far as that.
Careful what you wish for.
I joke, but it, I want to give my guys a shout-out as well, like everybody else, for the work they put in, uh, over the weekend getting things passable, and we're still, you know, there's, it's, it's still a mess in some of those areas Chris highlighted earlier. Uh, but kudos to those guys for getting out middle of the night, getting the stuff cleared up and picked up. Um, and I will reiterate, because I, I hear the phone calls that come in, please be patient, uh, with Atlanta pickup. It's go, it's, I don't know that two weeks is gonna get it. It's gonna be a minute, um, before that stuff comes in. Only thing I got, um, really is that we're, we're a couple of weeks, we're tying up loose ends on a couple of projects, and we're, we're two good weather weeks away from being ready to pave, uh, or getting the contractors in here to do the milling, and then get the county in here to, to do our paving for the summer. Um, so we just, we, we need some good weather to finish up, and then we need about two weeks of patching, and we'll be ready to go for, for paving. Um, I'm not gonna take any more of your time, but I, I will entertain any questions.
Thank you, Jeremiah. Any questions for Mr. Still? Appreciate it, man. Uh, Mr. McGuire, you've been busy.
Yes, Mayor, I have. Thank you. Um, I, instead of going over the, the report and say, hey, we've installed this and that, I, I want to take this opportunity to kind of just touch on what's happened within the last twenty-four hours in the telecommunications department, just to make everybody aware as far as what's going on. We had a storm hit, which was, which was bad enough in itself, and as everybody has reiterated, there's been several different areas that were hit pretty hard, Carwood Drive, and Etten Drive, Armstead, Holly Hill, a bunch of those places got tore up pretty bad. And in fact, there are some of those areas that still have wire down on the ground. Hopefully, fingers crossed, by tomorrow, most of our mainline outages and stuff should be repaired. But on top of that storm and everything that went on, uh, yesterday at about seven o'clock, we discovered that our main backhaul provider had a fiber cut or fiber damage of some sort of us at a facility in Forsyth. And we have a primary circuit where most of all of our traffic goes through. We have a couple of spare circuits that some of our traffic goes through. And in times past when this happens, we're able to kind of manipulate that traffic and push some over here if we need to, push some over here. Well, those circuits, though be different from they are, are by the same backhaul provider, because up until about a month ago, that's the only backhaul provider that we physically can connect to and, and send our traffic to. Unfortunately, that cut was so severe, it affected our alternate circuits as well. So the best way I can put as far as what happened was, you, you live in Monroe, you work in Atlanta, you wake up and jump in the car and cut on the radio and found out that they have shut down two eighty-five, eighty-five, and seventy-eight, and you're trying to get to Atlanta. I mean, that's, that's basically, uh, what happened. So the fiber repair itself, I just know it was near a railroad and some damaged conduit under a railroad. If you've ever done any, any workings or dealings with railroads, it's, it's very, it's very difficult. Put in a temporary solution. That, that was repaired about four in the morning, but when they did that, uh, we, our services, did not come back up properly like it should have been. So they dispatched some engineers and text to Monroe today, and about, about twelve forty-five, I would say-ish, services finally restored and, and got back to where it should be. Now, why am I telling everybody this? Up until about a month ago, we haven't had an ability to have a redundant circuit provider, but once we completed the GTC circuit that we finished about a month, two months ago, this gives us the ability to avoid this disaster moving forward. If anything like this should happen, automatically, our traffic should route through a network that is completely independent of our current circuit provider, a different direction even, you know, outside of some tragic disaster that might be for us, befall us, that would take everything down. We hope this situation will not happen again in the future. Uh, that process is already underway. Unfortunately, it's not like flicking a switch. You can't just have a, a circuit delivered to your building by saying, hey, I'd like to get one tomorrow. There's a lot of puzzle pieces that have to go in place, but they are getting there. This unfortunate incident probably came about two months too early, and, and, uh, in my tenure here in twenty-three years, it's probably one of the worst outages we've ever experienced. Thankfully, it's resolved. The combating storms did not help with that, but I want to give a kudos to the telecommunications team. We had guys that came in on Saturday after the storm came through at six o'clock, didn't go home to five AM the next morning, went home and got a couple hours of sleep, got back up, and came back in Sunday, and, and, and they have, they have worked their tails off. I'm sure we're not the only ones. Other departments have worked just as hard, and I, I, I just want the other departments to know from my perspective, public safety, police, fire, electric, public works. I'm sure I'm missing some, and if it is, it's, it's non-intentional. How much we appreciate you guys and everything that you do in assisting with road clearing and getting stuff out of here. Uh, it has made our job a lot easier in trying to get services and stuff restored. But the good news is, hopefully by tomorrow, the bulk of this should be put back together from a damage perspective, and the big problems that we had over the past eighteen hours were resolved this afternoon. So I have, if anybody has any questions or anything, I'll be glad to answer that. But, uh, I just wanted to give an update as far as what happened and how did we get to where we're at.
Thank you, Mr. McGuire. Any questions from Mike? I know you're gonna sleep well tonight. Um, and then really thank you for what y'all have done. Uh, Mr. Middlebrooks, water sewer, gas, electric?
Uh, I start as well as, uh, want to tell all the departments, thank you for their help in the storm. That was, uh, that was, seemed like they're getting worse and worse every time they come, so I hope this ain't something we can, I hope we don't expect this every year. But, uh, thanks to Covington, thanks to, uh, Griffin, Kendall, and UTEC both sending crews in, uh, over the weekend, uh, and all the crews here. Much appreciated. Oh, want to give an update on the two large bond projects, uh, one being the sixteen-inch , uh, water main that's going down Maribor in Union now. Uh, it's headed to, once it gets to the curve at Union, it'll cross under Born at Seventy-Eight, and then it'll continue down Remish Lane to Cherry Hill, uh, to the public worksite, and that's where the new half a million gallon tank will be installed. Uh, they've got the piers poured for the tank. Those have been installed. Now it'll be a waiting game. Uh, the metal for the tank is expected later this year, so I don't think we'll see construction till probably January, uh, if we're lucky. So, uh, but that one's moving on. And the twenty-four inch and the twenty-inch main that's going along Seventy-Eight, uh, they've started installing the pipe. Now they've got two crews here, one starting at Cedar Ridge working this way, one starting at, uh, Sarles and Cook Street, and they're gonna be headed the opposite way. Uh, it's going good. We can just get the rain out of here and the storms, and, uh, I think they counted along the easement, they've, they've, they've cleared. I think they counted over thirty trees that have fell across the easement that they've already had cleared, so now we gotta do some more clearing. But it's moving along. And then, uh, wanted to recognize the electric crew. They recently received the Jeff Cook Safety Diamond Award. It's, uh, second year in a row, so wanted to, uh, give them a shout-out for that as well. That's all I got.
Thank you, Rodney. Any questions for Mr. Middlebrooks? I know you've been, you've been wearing it out, too. Thank you. Um, and I'm coming back to you with the approval of the Jacks Creek Wastewater Treatment Engineering.
Uh, asking for your, your approval to proceed with the engineering services, uh, with Wheaton and Singleton for the, uh, design and, uh, bidding out of the wastewater sewer plant expansion. As you know, we're, we'll, this'll double our capacity at the plant, uh, and it's, uh, in the amount of one million, six hundred and nineteen thousand, six hundred and sixty-five dollars.
Funding source on that, I'm gonna recommend we use our utility capital reserve from, uh, tap fees primarily, and then later on, as we get into some bond or financing, we can kind of call some of that back. But this'll at least get us kick-started, so we don't have to wait her out on securing additional funding.
We are going forward with the full forty-two million project.
Well, that's the, yeah, the, the cost estimate right there, so, um.
Instead of the thirty-eight or whatever.
Yeah, the, the full, the six point eight MGD.
I'll entertain a motion.
Move to approve.
Thank you, Mr. Dickinson. Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you, Mr. Gregory. Is there a discussion? You none, all in favor, signal about by saying aye. All opposed, like sign. Motion carries, that passes. Uh, moving to new business of public hearing, post-award RDF hearing. Ms. Thompson?
Thank you, Mayor. Um, this is the public hearing I had spoke of earlier for the post-award for the redevelopment loan from, um, DCA. Um, I'm gonna introduce Gabe Morris. Um, he is with our grant administrator, Carter and Sloop, um, and he will go over this and then, um, answer any questions that you may have.
Gabe, thank you, and thank, Winnie's been great.
Yeah, I, she has been patiently waiting for ice cream. She keeps tapping me on the shoulder every two minutes. Every time one of y'all started speaking, she was like, is it time now? Is it time?
And thank you so much, Winnie, and the ice cream is just right there. So we'll be quick, okay?
I will, I will move as quickly as I can. So this is the, uh, official post-award public hearing for the redevelopment fund application that was submitted and awarded. The award date that's associated with that from DCA is April first, um, even though a, a lot of it was initiated prior to that. That is the official date that was on the award packet that came out. So technically, we're supposed to have the meeting within thirty days of that. We're a little bit late, but it's okay. Um, DCA, uh, took a, a few minutes to get us the paperwork, so we'll, we'll call it even on that one. But this is the redevelopment fund project that is for rehabilitation of the Old Ford Building, uh, two oh eight South Broad Street, um, that's being handled by, uh, JEC Development, uh, Chad Draper and his crew. Um, I know that there are a couple of other folks on the agenda that I believe are gonna be tenants in that building that are gonna be talking to y'all later, but, um, the Old Ford Building is being rehabilitated with a million dollars in, well, nine hundred and forty thousand dollars in, uh, loan assistance from DCA. Um, it was a total million-dollar award. Uh, sixty thousand of it is for the administrative, um, purposes, and then the other nine hundred and forty is going to supplement the additional assistance Mr. Draper got for rehabilitation of that building. Uh, it's gonna be split between two tenants. Um, I believe it's well underway. Uh, I will tell you that I have reviewed all of the financial paperwork so far, and by the time the loan documents are fully executed, it, I believe, the next meeting, um, we probably will have everything to be able to submit one and only one drawdown and get all of that funds released at one time, uh, which should help make the paperwork process a lot simpler and quicker. Um, but this award is a little bit different than your standard CDBGs that y'all are used to, uh, because it is a redevelopment process. It was a grant to the city that is then being loaned out to the developer. Um, it still has all of the federal regulations with it, so we are still complying with Davis Bacon provisions for any contract that they're executing that's over a hundred thousand dollars. We are still complying with BABA. Uh, we're still complying with fair housing, equal opportunity requirements, section three requirements. Uh, every aspect that normally comes with a CDBG project is being handled. It's just it's, it's not y'all's headache this time. This time, it's the developer's headache. So, um, I have been working very diligently with him to make sure that all of his subcontractors, contractors, everybody who's associated with the project is checking all those boxes and meeting all those thresholds. Um, we have an official meeting with DCA staff for the kickoff, uh, that'll be upcoming, uh, next week. Um, and so that will be them reviewing everything that has been submitted so far and making sure that our paperwork is off to a good start. And after that, like I said, it should be pretty smooth sailing. But that is the long and short of it. Um, I'm here to make sure that all the compliance stuff stays in, in check. Um, it's gone, gone pretty well so far. Um, it's interesting, but, uh, it's, it's well.
Thank you. Thank you so much for being here. Thank you for that explanation. Are there any questions for Gabe? You can give me one minute. I'll declare this portion of the meeting open for the purpose of public input. Is there anyone here who would like to speak in favor of the redevelopment fund? Is there anyone here who would like to speak in favor of the redevelopment fund? Is there anyone here who would like to speak against redevelopment fund? Thank you for your input. Thank you, Gabe. Go ahead and take her. Glad you hear me, I appreciate it. Moving to environmental variance, number 37573, 11 Stokes Street, Mr. Probes.
I'll take that, Mayor. So this is coming from Brad Callender's report. As you know, he's up at the CNU conference. So an administrative special exception variance has been granted to the property owner to reduce the principal front building setback and accessory building setback by 20%. That's allowable under our code rules. However, there's been an additional petition to make the project feasible. It's an environmental variance that would reduce the 25-foot impervious setback to a 50, or setback from the 50-foot stream buffer. So the owner proposes to raise an existing single-family dwelling and replace it with a new single-family dwelling, but the environmental buffer is necessary due to just how the topography lays there. So the owner applicant's been working extremely well with us, and we're just trying to make this project a reality.
Thank you. Are there any questions for Logan? I'll declare this portion of the meeting open for the purpose of public input. Is there anyone here who would like to speak for or against the variance, 311 Stokes Street? Hear none, we'll move that immediately to new business. I'm gonna say, Logan, you go ahead and take it, but there it is.
The owner's not here.
I'm sorry?
They're not here.
They are.
Oh, okay.
Are there any questions for Logan? I'll entertain a motion.
Move to grant the variance.
I'm gonna give that one to Mr. Dickinson. Does anyone have a second coming from you, Tyler?
I think Tyler.
Second.
Thank you. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, like sign. Motion carries, that passes. variance is granted. Moving to the Malden Jenkins 2024 financial report, Ms. Thompson?
Thank you, Mayor. As you all know, annually, we are required to engage an external auditor to audit the city's financials. You each have before you this big report for your reading pleasure, and then you have these other two small reports. Will, with Malden Jenkins, will present those to you and go over that.
Thank you for coming in.
Thank you for having me. Thank you, Beth. Is that good?
Yes, sir.
You might want to straighten it up a little bit, you're a little bit tall.
There we go. Yes, thank you for having me, Mayor and Council. So as Beth mentioned, my name is Will Durzus. I'm a director with Malden Jenkins. I've been a part of the city's audit for more than a few years at this point, and my presentation tonight on the most recent financial audit and results of 2024 will be based on the auditor's discussion and analysis. So just jumping right in, on page two, you can read and see a little bit more of the profile of Malden Jenkins and its governmental practice. Adam Fraley is the engagement lead partner. My name is Will, and we had an engagement quality control review partner, whose name is Josh Carroll. On page three, you can find a little bit more of additional information, other industries and services provided by Malden Jenkins. All right, on page four, a few things I'm required to communicate to those charged with governance, that's all of you. Our auditor's responsibility is to express an opinion on the statements. We conduct our audit in accordance with standards accepted within the United States of America, as well as standards applicable to local governments, referred to as government auditing standards, which are uniquely applicable to the city. I'm pleased to share, we've issued an unmodified audit report, which is a clean opinion, and that just means that we think the city's financial statements present its results and financial standing fairly in all material respects. On page five, this is a review of the annual comprehensive financial report, which is referred to as an ACFR. It goes, it's something the city finance prepares that is above and beyond the state required, financial statements, including an introductory section, some statistical information on demographic and other non-financial data within the city. So kudos to city finance for putting together that report. All right, jumping in, page seven, I'll touch on some of the financial highlights of the city. So from the city's, not the utility or solid waste operation, just the city's governmental perspective, total assets were approximately 246 million at the end of December, offset by liabilities of about 82 million, and that results in net position, or you can think of as equity, of a total of about 165 million. Of that, about 135 is comprised of the city's investment in its fixed and capital assets, net of any debt that might encumber those assets. So that just speaks to the fact the city's invested heavily in its infrastructure and its assets over time, and there's some amounts that are restricted by external parties, creditors, grant agencies, and the end result is that there's unrestricted net position that would be considered available of about 21 million. On page eight, you can find some graphics, some information on the city's general fund, a revenue profile, and as you might expect, taxes, including property, vehicle, sales, business and occupation, everything that makes up about 75% of the total general fund revenues in 2024. On page nine, a breakdown of expenditures, of which public safety is the leader, making up about 50% of just general fund-based expenditures in 2024. Page 10, some more graphs, just showing a visual of the revenues and expenditures of the general fund in the past five years. Revenues have outpaced expenses over the past five years, although it was fairly close to a break even in 2024, but there's been a positive net change in the general fund equity in the past five years. And on page 11, this just discloses that in kind of a ratio format that indicates the city has available fund balance at the end of 24, 2024, to cover about 159 days, which is considered healthy as other common benchmarks say 75 to 90 days is what you look for there. All right, on page 12, I'll briefly touch on the results of the utilities fund, the solid waste fund. Total assets of the city's business-type activities is about 177 million at the end of 2024, offset by liabilities of about 67 million, and again, that results in its equity position of about 110 million, a large part of which is invested in capital and fixed assets. Operating revenues of the city's business-type activities increased from 2023 about 6%, and expense, operating expenses increased as well, not quite at that same rate. The end result was that the city's operating income doubled from 2023 to 2024 for its utilities and solid waste activity. And on page 13, you can see just a quick breakdown of the cash flows. Operating cash flows are the main element in the statement of cash flows, and the city's cash flows doubled for those operations from 2023 to 2024, from about 5 million to 10.6 million. All right, page 14, this is, just presents all the footnotes that you can find within city's ACFR, which just provide kind of a narrative of the financial information, a little more background. Page 15 discloses the two compliance reports applicable to the city, one being reporting for all local governments, the second being a single audit report in which the city has, we perform tests of its major federal programs and compliance with uniform guidance standards. And as I think Beth mentioned earlier, the end result was, we had no findings reported during 2024, so good work by the city. All right, almost there. Page 16, we did not identify any significant or unusual transactions. Just a few more required communications I need to share with you. On page 17, we had no difficulties with city management or any disagreements, and at the conclusion of our audit, we requested certain written representations that we received without any issue. On page 18, there were some audit adjustments proposed and posted to the city's funds by the auditors and city staff, including one past adjustment that was uncorrected at the end of the year but not considered to be material in any way. And then lastly, Malden Jenkins, we are independent of the city and its, any of its related organizations, and as you might imagine, being independent is kind of the cornerstone of an effective audit. Page 19, just discloses some other matters for communication to the board, to management, to anyone who cares to read up on it, just summarizes some future pronouncements that may be in effect for the city based on the upcoming changes enacted by the standard-setting board, called the GASB. So they keep us and Beth's team very busy over the years, and even if you're not involved in the process directly, it's good to read up and have a little bit of a, stay current on some of these upcoming changes. But that concludes my presentation, and I'm happy to answer any questions that anyone has.
Thank you, Will. Are there any questions? Look, I know you poured your heart and soul into this, and it's not easy, so thank you for coming in and talking with us.
Absolutely. Thanks for having me.
Yes, sir.
Thank you, Will.
Are there any questions for Beth? I'll entertain a motion, please.
Move to approve.
Thank you, Ms. Malcolm. Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you, Ms. Sams. Is there any discussion? Hear none, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, like sign. Motion carries, that passes. Moving to the application for beer and wine on-premise consumption at your pie, Mr. Rosenthal.
Yes, sir, Mayor, that application is in order.
Thank you. Are there any questions for Paul? Hear none, I'll entertain a motion.
Move to approve.
Give that one to Ms. Sams. Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you, Ms. Brown. Is there any discussion? All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, like sign. Motion carries, that passes. Moving to the application for spiritus liquors and beer and wine on-premise consumption at the Red Crawfish, Mr. Rosenthal?
Yes, Mayor, that application is also in order.
Are there any questions for Paul? Hear none, I'll entertain a motion.
Move to approve.
Motion by Ms. Malcolm. Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you, Ms. Sams. Is there any discussion? All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, like sign. Motion carries, that passes. Moving to beer and wine package sales at 914 Broad Street, Mr. Rosenthal?
Yes, sir, Mayor, that application is also in order.
Are there any questions for Paul? I'll entertain a motion, please.
Move to approve.
Thank you, Ms. Sams. Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you, Ms. Malcolm. Is there any discussion? All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, like sign. Motion carries, that passes. Moving to the application for the brewery at Grizzle Beer, Mr. Rosenthal?
Yes, Mayor, and again, that application is in order.
Any questions for Paul? Hear none, I'll entertain a motion.
I'll move.
Thank you, Mr. Thompson. Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you, Ms. Sams. Is there any discussion? Hear none, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, like sign. Motion carries, that passes. Moving to district items, Ms. Malcolm.
Just again, thank you to the city workers and all the coordination from top-tier leadership all the way through. I don't, I didn't hear many complaints, other than West Spring Street's still without, and they're still waiting, trying to run their businesses. You said tomorrow, that'd be great. But they were all very respectful and understood. But I rode around Sunday afternoon, and it was amazing what we saw.
That was pretty awful. Ms. Sams?
Just to second what Ms. Malcolm said, I know that it's gonna be a busy time getting everything cleaned up, and then we're gonna be into the Crete Memorial Festival this weekend, wherein all of city staff works overtime to make that happen, so just appreciate everyone's efforts.
Thank you, Ms. Brown.
Same here. Also wanted to thank the Monroe Estates delegation for coming in and talking about what's going on in their community. I really appreciate everything that they have done. They have really stepped up and shown what community really is, and I really appreciate them. I call them my community ambassadors over there, because they will pick up the phone and they'll call me even if it's on a Saturday night. So I really appreciate them. Also want to remind everybody about Habitat for Humanity. They have their book bag and health fair that's coming up on Saturday, July 26. It will be a book bag giveaway, health fair, and estate planning over at the Boys and Girls Club. That information would have gone out in the utility bill, so thank you again to the city for supporting them. Again, and also on July 19, Shepherd's House over on, at 710 Harris Street will have a family fun day and a book bag giveaway as well from 12 to 4.
And that was 710 Harris Street?
Yes, 710 Harris Street.
Okay.
And that's with Michael and Gloria Reese. And that's all I have.
Thank you, I'm a slow rider. Mr. Gregory?
Same as everybody else, thanks to everybody in the city, especially to streets, I'd like to make sure and say. Last time when we were covering all the cleanup crews and who was handling what, I made the terrible mistake of not including streets, even though I did the same thing as Mr. McGuire and included a catch-all. Streets in particular, I want to say, I think did a fantastic job. Yeah.
Mr. Thompson?
I do have a couple of questions, and just, I'm starting to get some questions about traffic through downtown. Could y'all give us just, seems like it's backing up further and further, could y'all give us just a short synopsis on the connector or bypass or whatever you want to call it? Is it on track, ahead of schedule?
We're on track and ahead of schedule, if that's the case. There are three numbers, three dates. Mr. Briscoe with the Arsenale said his portion will be ready by the end of summer. And I said, well, I'd feel more comfortable just saying, you know, maybe September, but DOT's saying October. The one flying the ointment is Windstream. They need to move some of their things, but regarding the roadway and the bridges, it'll be done. And I know, that can't get here fast enough, but we do have a lovely town that they can look at all the sites while they're sitting in traffic.
Well, they get a chance to, because it's deadlocked.
I know, it's way past your store. I know.
Rodney's got a bulldozer, he can take care of Windstream real quick.
I know, that one serves two purposes.
They what, Rodney? They what?
They actually showed, Windstream killed up in the last week, and started removing all their stuffs.
Oh, good.
It should be, poles are gone, I think there's.
Thank you.
Thanks for that information, it's just passing it on to everybody, because like I said, it looks to me like traffic's getting worse.
It's getting tough.
Well, and pedestrians are very careless and not using the crosswalks correctly. There's a reason that you wait for a figure that is white to cross. You do not cross on red. These people that are turning right or left, you're going to get hit if you do not follow the arrows. It's dangerous.
Pay attention, because drivers don't pay attention.
That's right.
Who knows?
I've learned the hard way.
Mr. Dickinson?
Nothing further, other than I second Mr. Thompson's bulldozer motion.
Hey, one other thing, I wanted to piggyback off Mr. Thompson's question. The second critical piece of the bypass is the signalization project we're working on at 11 and 78. It's been a long, slow go, just getting GDOT to understand the metrics that are about to happen, and I think they're almost there. So anyway, our engineers, just this week, submitted to them a permit for the signal and a couple other modifications at the intersection that we will have to do. I don't have full cost estimates of what everything is right now, because it really depends on what type of equipment is permitted by GDOT, but I'll get an idea of that very soon. And as soon as we get that, we're gonna go as fast as we can to get that installed.
Right.
Thank you, Logan. My report, just a couple Um, my report, just a couple of things, uh, yesterday, the University of Liverpool students, uh, came to town and, and they learned about southern hospitality. Uh, they absolutely loved being in Monroe. Um, had a great time with them, gave them a tour of, uh, downtown Childers Park, Logan and Chris and I stayed in, in here and talked with them for about forty-five minutes before we walked around. Um, they wanted an authentic American coffee shop, so took them to Coffee Camper. Um, what's interesting, over the last few years, we've had the Nelson Mandela Fellows from Sub-Saharan Africa, uh, farmers from Northern England, um, all through UGA Global Studies and the Georgia Historic Trust, and the comments that we always get are really, really interesting. Um, number one, how, how nice people are, number two, how clean the town is, number three, they love the statues, this group yesterday thought it was just wonderful. Uh, and the Georgia Historic Trust, we were described as very healthy. Um, so we've got a good thing going, uh, and let's keep it up. Um, and I also want to recognize our, uh, future, uh, city clerk, sitting here in the back, on her own volition, she hasn't even started yet. Um, so Laura Powell, we're glad you're here. Um, that being said, I need a motion to adjourn to executive session, please.
Motion to adjourn.
Thank you, Mr. Thompson, is there a second? Thank you, Ms. Brown. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, like sign. Motion carried, meaning it, meaning adjournance to executive session.